... as our next interviewee has withdrawn his contention. So Howard Post is, if you haven't seen, is not going to be interviewing today. So are we going? I'll call the special meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order for Wednesday, August 17th, 2016. It is 4:30 PM. We are interviewing candidates for the Urban Renewal Commission. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Are you here?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
So for the folks who are going to be watching this on TV later, we are doing what we call "Live to Tape" today. So that, because these interviews are going to occur in two batches, so this won't be aired live and not until after the second round of interviews take place. So that's just a heads up for everybody. Nobody gets an opportunity to hear what the questions are or what the answers were from any individual candidate. I assume we have the TV in the lobby off.
We have it showing the view, but we've already double-checked to make sure that it's completely muted and it will not be changed. Jamie is monitoring the outdoor area when people come in.
Okay, thank you. So, there's my agenda. Our first person is Mr. Tom O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien? Good afternoon. So, Commissioner Shaw?
All right. Hey, Tom, thanks for applying to the Urban Renewal Commission here. First question is, please provide us with a brief introduction of yourself, your background and experience, and why you want to serve on the city's Urban Renewal Commission.
My background is quite varied, primarily oriented towards sales and training of sales personnel at the headquarters of a major international company. In my work experience, I have dealt with a extremely wide variety of industrial and business entities. I understand what it is they need and are looking for to take care of their growth opportunities, and I think that that's a good fit for what we should be doing here in the city in terms of trying to get family wage jobs. I was very happy to see today's Oregon City News where we were able to accomplish 20 new good-paying jobs with a expenditure of slightly less than $4,000 per job. To me, those are the kinds of things that are meaningful and meet the goal that you have of a return on investment. Return on investment is very important, and the taxpayers have some concerns about what we've been getting for our money spent, so.
So, but you want to serve on the Urban Renewal Commission? I mean, I saw you here, and why do you want to do that?
Well, because I think that my skills lend themselves to getting this Urban Renewal Commission headed in the direction that it needs to go. Right now, I see one member who has a wealth of experience and background, and, you know, I think you need more people than just one that has that.
So, on that note, you see the value of the Urban Renewal Commission?
I see the value of an Urban Renewal Commission such as the one that operates in the city of Canby and operates in a number of other cities in which I have lived across the country. I do not see that value currently in the Oregon City Urban Renewal District.
So like, that kind of gets me to the point of, I know you're the co-petitioner of the...
You're absolutely right.
Okay, so, the reason, so I'm trying to weigh this out. You want to be on the commission, but you don't want urban renewal.
So is this the question that you're going to be asking all of candidates, Brian?
Well, only you, because you're the only one with a co, got a petition after they get rid of urban renewal.
I've been through enough of these types of interviews here in the city to know that you have a format that you typically follow, and it does not appear to me that you are following that particular procedure. Is that correct, Tony?
He's asking a clarification follow-up question. We could certainly add it, if you'd like, to the other candidates for follow-up.
I did not come here to be antagonized. I came here to apply.
Right. If you don't want to answer that, that's fine then, okay? Great.
What is your level of understanding of how urban renewal works? Please explain. And then, what impacts on the community have you observed as a result of urban renewal in Oregon City?
Urban renewal, when used according to how it was intended, uses tax increment financing to assist in raising the property tax values within the district in which it's operating. We have had a district here in this city for many, many years, and the millions of dollars which have been collected, according to the county assessor's office, have not shown any increase over and above the 3% that is allowed by the state of Oregon over the period of time that it has existed. Therefore, that would indicate to me that it has been somewhat ineffective.
Do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I'm sorry, I did not catch the end of that.
Do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I think it can be. I think it often is, and sometimes it is not. The reason it is, is that if it's used according to how it was designed to be used, it will create an increase in the valuations. It will also provide family wage jobs. In many instances, the jobs which are created are replacement-type jobs, jobs that are relatively low-paying, at the low end of the wage scale, and in those cases, it does not tend to be an effective use.
Okay. What are the current urban renewal work plan objectives and priorities?
Current goals, objectives, and priorities?
Current urban renewal work plan objectives and priorities.
The objectives, as I understand them, as of last year, which was the last time I think you had a goal-setting session, were the COV, which is coming to some fruition, to find additional people who would like to participate in the programs that currently exist as far as storefront and interiors, and, as Mayor Holliday has indicated, some efforts towards getting something reasonable out at the Rossman landfill area.
How would these objectives and priorities be aligned with your objectives and priorities as an urban renewal commissioner?
I think that I would go along with whatever the goals and objectives were, should I be appointed. I might like to have some input in how they're implemented, but...
Thank you.
All right. What is the, what is a significant contribution that you could make to the Urban Renewal Commission's effort in accomplishing the goals and objectives of the urban renewal plan?
Of the urban renewal what?
Urban renewal plan.
Plan?
Yeah.
I think that the things that I can contribute are my analytical skills. I frequently see commissioners who come to the meeting without having had the opportunity to thoroughly look at the information provided by staff. And it's clearly evident, when you sit out here in the audience, that they haven't done their homework. And I believe that to do the job properly, you must do your homework. You can't just come in here and fly by the seat of your pants. An example would be a recent situation that I mentioned in my application, where a discussion took place about spending additional monies on the train depot. No one on the commission even asked the question, "What is the cost of that?"
It was in our documents, and we, I knew exactly what the cost was.
And we did our homework.
It was $5,000.
How much was it?
It was about $5,000. It was in our paperwork.
That is never revealed to the public. It was not in the paperwork that was available to the public. So it would just seem to the public who's observing that the decision was made with no, no understanding of what they were voting on.
Commissioner Smith?
Sorry. In your opinion, how well-informed are Oregon City's citizens about the fundamentals of urban renewal? And if communication or informational improvements are needed, what ways would you improve community education about urban renewal?
I think there's a very low level of understanding on the part of the majority of Oregon City residents. As far as an educational process, it's a very difficult thing.
Yeah.
Trying to educate a public who does not want to be educated on a given point, I liken it to trying to teach a non-golfer how to play golf. You're doomed from the very beginning. So you, it's, no matter how hard you try to explain and educate, I don't know of a viable method today that exists, not Facebook, not any social media, that would assist in getting the word across on how urban renewal monies should be spent and used. I think it takes someone who has an interest first in what's going on, and then self-educates themselves.
If chosen, how would you interpret your role and what would be your expectations throughout your term of service as an Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission member?
I would see my role as one of representing those large masses that Rocky just referred to, who are uneducated, but yet have serious questions about what the bang is that they're getting for their buck. I think that your form of application itself quite clearly points out, it states, "The city of Oregon City encourages participation in its affairs by all people, especially those who are represented in the public." And I don't think that they are represented currently. I really don't see that those people who you're trying to reach and give, give an understanding are being represented in the decision-making process. And so I would hope that I would be able to represent them and serve in their interests.
Do you have any additional comments, or is there anything that you would like to ask the commission?
The other comment that I would ask of you is that you consider thoroughly the decisions that you're making, whether it's in choosing a member to join you, or if it's in choosing how you spend your money. Because those are public dollars. And I did notice also on the application form that there's a note in here that the Oregon City Ordinance Number 01-1031 establishes a criminal history record check for public service volunteers. And I think every public service volunteer should have that against them. They should do a public check of their criminal record history.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Please go.
Appreciate you applying. So it looks like we have about 12 minutes before our...
The next candidate's here. If you wanted to take the next candidate early, or you can...
Yeah, that's fine. We'll eventually run into a hole, though, right?
We will.
Okay.
Possibly. You get enough or no?
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. That's what I expected. Got somebody to be singing tonight? Do we have singing tonight, or?
Yeah, you do. Every night. Actually, the National Anthem will be sung at the rodeo tonight. Thank you.
Oh.
Cowboys and...
Well, we'll try to speed this up a little bit, Ray. You've got things to do here.
That's right. I haven't, I haven't got my horse ready yet.
Okay, so, Ray Gordon, applicant for the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission. Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Ray, thank you for applying to the Urban Renewal Commission. This is good, so...
We're returning, returning my applicant. Yeah.
Please provide us with a brief introduction of yourself, your background and experience, and why you want to serve on the city's Urban Renewal Commission.
All right, that's a, that's a big one. I've been a resident for about 10 years, and during that time, I was on PRACT, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and really enjoyed working on, on the 10 goals. That was one thing that I really appreciated being a part of. Then I was a neighborhood chair for Hillendale, where I got a chance to look over plans for Safeway and to be in on that and trying to decide how important a couple feet on, on where people are parking, you know, was like a big hotbed issue. And that kind of showed me a little bit about development and being in on it as it was happening. And then went on to chair for the Neighborhood Association for McLaughlin, and that was a whole, whole other experience. And, you know, where heritage was so important and how that has to do with, you know, like the library expanding and all that stuff. And I know that urban renewal is, is a really important thing in so many communities, and I know that my, my take on some things and stuff could take a new, could, could add to that as well, because I have that experience with a few different committees and being in on development and all that stuff, and also being very invested in the community myself. And, and I know urban renewal is, is really important, and I want to learn and, and invest in, in being a part of that as well.
So, I don't know if you got to find this out or not, but when you were working on the Safeway project, that was one of the benefits from our first urban renewal district up there on the Hilltop, was because of the infrastructure that went in so Safeway could do their thing. So, there you go.
Okay.
And yeah, it's really added to the whole community. And, and also, I know that a lot, a lot of people, you know, there's people that want more business and people that want it to stay the way it is. And I've seen how Fred Meyer still exists, you know, and grocery outlets still exist. So it hasn't, it hasn't made them close. Well, Haggins is another one, but...
He was a victim of their own.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I just liked the idea of having 24-hour, if there could be another 24-hour.
All right. Yeah, me too.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Please explain your level of understanding of how urban renewal works, and what impacts on the community have you observed as a result of urban renewal?
Well, I know that downtown, the downtown Oregon, you know, downtown Main Street is, is like a perfect example of, of growing, utilizing those funds and, and growing what, you know, what Main Street was and what Main Street is. So that's, that's a, to me, a really good example of, of that, as well as the Safeway, and that being able to come in and, and make a difference in the community.
Do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I think, I think a lot of businesses, especially looking, I mean, there's so, so many places, like, like Cabela's and stuff, there's so many different communities trying to, to attract these businesses, and, and to have just the step up on, on that, I think is really important. And I think it's, it's the icing of the cake. It's like, there's cake everywhere. You know, Tualatin has cake. You know, Tiger has cake.
Tualatin has the icing, too, by the way.
Well, actually, they have the sprinkles now, so. But to have that as, as icing on the cake, to let somebody bake their business here, I think it's, it's very important.
What are the current urban renewal work plan objectives and priorities?
I don't know all those, but I did really hone in on, on the wanting to build more of an employment structure, having more employment, and I think that's number one.
And how would these objectives and priorities be aligned with your objectives and priorities as an urban renewal commissioner?
Objectives, well, aligns with mine because I think having more, my personal stuff is, is having more businesses that, that can have more visitors, and it aligns with, with that, that to have more employment, to have more employees live and be able to live and work in the same city. And that's a big thing for me. Thank you.
All right, Ray. What, what is a significant contribution that you could make to the Urban Renewal Commission's effort in accomplishing the goals and objectives of the urban renewal plan?
So from my experience in a lot of different industries, from media to tourism, I think I can add the bigger picture. Seeing the bigger picture as it, as it, as it pertains to, you have residents and you have visitors. And a lot of, I think a lot of people are focused on the residents and making the residents, and for instance, like, to live and to work in the same thing, but there's also the visitor. And I think when you put a couple lines in the water like that, you know, you're going to get bigger fish. It's like, to just, to just concentrate on the residents, I think is, is not the right way to go, is you have to put the two lines in the water, you got the visitors and the residents. And because of my, my past experience with marketing, media, and tourism, I see that bigger picture, and I think that would add a lot to any committee that I'm on.
Okay, thank you.
In your opinion, how well-informed are Oregon City's citizens about the fundamentals of urban renewal? And if communication or informational improvements are needed, what ways would you help improve communities, the community's education on urban renewal?
You know, I think a lot of people don't understand it, and there's, there's so many ways you can, you can take urban renewal. And I think first and foremost is boots on the ground when it comes to all the neighborhood associations, is having somebody come in and, and just really just explain it, basic explain it. And then, you know, little handouts that just have little bullet points and stuff, and examples of, of what it has helped in Oregon City. So really, boots on the ground. Every association should have a, you know, you know, a couple times a year, have somebody come in and talk about it. Because I think it would, it would increase how many people are behind it, especially if you don't understand it.
Thank you.
If chosen, how would you interpret your role and what would be your expectations throughout your term of service as an Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission member?
My expectations would be that I, I would be able to, to help educate on that level, on that boots-on-the-ground, and to always be learning a little bit more and, and connecting directly with the people that got the, got the help. Also, I think having more information on the, on the website, the Oregon City website, where there's, you know, there's personalized stories about it, I think really helps when you, you personalize it a little bit more, where you call out the business owner and about the business owner and what happened. A lot of times, I think, when you really want to connect more with your community, you just, you have to have those personal stories. And I know saying, "This is what happened, and this is what, what got helped and stuff," but saying, "This is the, this is the business owner and his family and what he was able to do, or she was able to do." I think that would make a big difference in bridging that, that cohesiveness between, between everybody.
Do you have any additional comments, or is there anything that you would like to ask the commission?
Just a comment that I appreciate that you guys have, make this opportunity available. Yeah.
Once again, thanks for applying, and we'll take it under consideration, and...
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ray.
All right, I'm gonna go do my patriotic duty.
That's right. Letter back.
So is Mitchell here? Okay. Well, we probably got at least 15 minutes. Let's take a, let's take a break. Okay, so we are back in session as the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission, and our next interviewee is, what?
You are interviewing.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, City Commission. We are interviewing for the Urban Renewal Commission. And our next candidate is Mike Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you.
Hello, Mike. Thank you for applying to the Urban Renewal Commission here. So we've got a few questions here for you. Please provide us with a brief introduction of yourself, your background and experience, and why you want to serve on the city's Urban Renewal Commission.
Wow.
Yeah.
There's a lot rolled into one question.
There you go.
My name is Mike Mitchell. My wife and I live in the Walnut Grove subdivision in Oregon City. We've lived here for eight years this time around. We were in Redland for a few years, which is kind of the Oregon City area, and we've been in West Lynn for 20 years or so, and now we're back, back in Oregon City.
He's back, he's back. It's all right.
Well, interesting thing to say about West Lynn later on, but if it comes up. I've, I've been involved with PRACT two times. Second time I'm back on it now, I was on it for two terms, including chair for two years. Term limited off, and then got back on again this year. I think I forgot to put it on my application, but I'm also the Caulfield Neighborhood Association representative to the CIC. And why I'm interested in this, I don't know if any of you are musical fans, but there's a musical on Broadway now, called Hamilton, and there's a song called "The Room Where It Happens." And not to diminish what PRACT and the CIC and the other advisory committees do, they're advisory committees. And I would like an opportunity to step up onto a group that has a budget and, in the room where things happen, where decisions are made. I, I think, I think I have some good ideas. I think I've contributed to the advisory committees that I've taken part on, and, and I'd like a chance to step up and do a little more.
Great, thanks.
Please explain your level of understanding of how urban renewal works and what impacts on the community you have observed as a result of urban renewal?
Okay. I know that the basis of it is tax increment financing, where a district is established, and within those boundaries, tax money that would go to all of those taxing authorities, like the school district or whatever, those amounts are frozen at the level, the dollar amounts are frozen at the level at the start of the district. And then the increment is any increase in, in revenue because of increased property values or whatever. And that tax increment money goes to the Urban Renewal District to finance or pay for debt for projects, for economic development that happen within the district. What I know of what's happened in Oregon City, I know that Hilltop Urban Renewal District was a huge success. Read over 1,000 percent increase in the property tax values. That's been a huge success. I think the most visible success that's happened with the downtown and north end that has had a huge impact were the storefront grants. And what I was going to say about West Lynn, and I have a lot of friends in West Lynn, and without exception, they talk about what wonderful things have happened in downtown Oregon City. They are envious, they wish West Lynn had something like that. And I think a huge reason for what's happened downtown is urban renewal. It got very quickly to the point where, the tipping point for the business owners, the outliers, were the ones that didn't take part, not the ones that did. So rather, you know, we humans like things that happen in a hurry, I guess, and all of a sudden, there was a huge change, what, what seemed like, all of a sudden, a huge change downtown. And it might have happened over a long period of time, but it doesn't have the impact of it does when, when it seems like overnight, things are really happening. And I think urban renewal money is what pushed that, pushed it over the tipping point.
Thank you.
Do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
And it might have happened over a long period of time, but it doesn't have the impact of it does when, when it seems like overnight, things are really happening. And I think urban renewal money is what pushed that, pushed it over the tipping point.
Thank you.
Do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I do. I think it's, I think it's a tremendous tool. And I think, you know, there is some concern on, with, with other taxing authorities that they're harmed because even though their costs might be going up, the amount of money that they're getting from within the district is held the same. But when you look at the fact that the Urban Renewal District is only a portion of their total taxing area, that reduces the impact. Plus, I, I think you can just look at the, at the successes here and okay, you know, there's going to be a little deferred, deferred compensation, deferred, I can't think of the word.
Pleasure? Enjoyment?
Yeah, there you go, enjoyment, deferred results. But they're going to get it back 10 times over by waiting.
What are the current Urban Renewal Work Plan objectives and priorities?
Oh, man.
Speaking of homework.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I read that. Obviously, the priority is, is, you know, within the downtown and north end district. I know it mentions transportation and parking issues. As far as priority areas, the landfill, the cove, which is now broken ground. Those are the priorities that I recall, along with the storefront grants continuing and the adaptive reuse grants.
How would these objectives and priorities be aligned with your objectives and priorities as an Urban Renewal Commissioner?
I, I think they line up very well. When you think about Oregon City, I was thinking about it today, driving down here. It's, it's kind of like a barbell. There's a, there's a huge weight, positive weight, at the cove and the landfill. There's a huge weight at the Willamette Falls site, but you can't lift it unless there's a solid bar in the middle. And that's what's going on in downtown. So I, you know, I think we've got to look particularly at parking issues, transportation issues, moving people not only from those two places, which are going to be huge regional attractions, but moving them into and through downtown and enhancing all the business, all the businesses downtown and transportation. I have a picture on the, a photograph on the wall in my office that was taken on Main Street in 1895 of an electric trolley on Main Street. Too bad it's not still there.
Time goes on.
Ah, here we go.
Commissioner Shaw.
Okay, Mike, what is a significant contribution that you could make to the Urban Renewal Commission's effort in accomplishing the goals and objectives of the Urban Renewal Plan?
I think, I think I'm a good listener. I think I'm good at evaluating information and arriving in a decision. I think I could be a good spokesman to the public through the Neighborhood Association or other groups about what urban renewal is trying to do. I don't have any problem getting in front of a group and getting in front of a microphone to try to spread the word, you know, because there is a little bit of negative feeling out there about urban renewal. And I think I could put a positive, not a positive spin, but I am positive about it, about what urban renewal can do, and I think I could help move that forward.
Good, thanks.
In your opinion, how well informed are Oregon City citizens about the fundamentals of urban renewal? And if communication and informational improvements are needed, what ways would you improve community education on urban renewal? You just spoke on some of them.
No, I don't, I don't think most people do have a good understanding about it, particularly the, the fact that it is taxed dollars, but it's not additional tax dollars. The city is not going, you know, asking them for, for more tax money. It's a wonderful mechanism to make things happen without having to ask for more money. As far as getting that word out, that, that's a, that's a really good challenge. I mean, I don't, I don't know that most, I'm not sure most people in Oregon City would know that there is a downtown urban renewal district. Exactly how you publicize that, I, that's a good, good project.
Well, thanks, Mike.
I'm getting all the tough questions. Come on, I gotta, I gotta throw some of it back.
You're getting the same questions everybody else.
Yeah, don't ask us. We don't know.
If chosen, how would you interpret your role and what would be your expectations through your term of service as an Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission member?
I, I think my role, as I touched on it before, I mean, I, I have my ideas about where I think the city should go and, and how we should develop economically. But I also am a good listener and I'm not afraid to, you know, change my opinion if, if presented with those, those kinds of facts. I, I think I would be someone who could listen to the various sides and help the group reach a decision.
Do you have any additional comments or is there anything that you would like to ask the commission?
No, I don't think so. I got, I got a chance to tell you about the CIC thing that I had neglected to put on there. I'm excited about this opportunity and, and I, I would like to see it happen faster than the, than the timeframe that I saw on the application process, because I've, I'm ready to get in and try to help.
All right.
We don't do anything fast here. Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you, Mike.
It's just a fact.
So I'm guessing that Matthew's not here either. So, Mr. Planton, you want to come up? We had somebody withdraw, so the schedules kind of fluctuate a little bit, so you're here early, so you get to get out early too.
Bet you guys out a little early too. No. Unfortunately. I tried.
Yeah, nice.
So, Mr. Shaw?
All right. Welcome, Joshua. And thank you for applying to the Urban Renewal Commission here. So, please provide us with a brief introduction of yourself, your background and experience, and why you want to serve on the city's Urban Renewal Commission.
Okay, so my name is Josh Planton. I am, I've been, I was born and raised in Oregon City. I've been living here for about 29 years, almost 30. My family has lived in Oregon City for over 100 years. First great, great grandfather came in 1904, lived what is now Tony's Fish Market, that was where he lived. Since then, more family members have continued to come here and live here and stay here. Right now, I think I have about 30 to 40 family members living in the Oregon City area or just within, you know, maybe a mile outside of the city limits. I went to public school in Oregon City, graduated from La Salle High School, went to Linfield College. My majors were finance and political science. After that, I spent some time in the investment, financial investment industry. After that, I moved on to what I do now really is the technology, high-tech industry. I do business consulting for technology alliances or what we, what most people would call trade associations. Think of USB or HDMI, those kinds of organizations. In that role, I play a big part in running logistics and operational support for high-tech companies all across the world. I do a lot of international travel. One of my clients in particular does development work for broadband access in remote parts of Latin America and Africa and Asia. So I get to do a lot of the interesting work of going there and visiting some of those sites. Additionally, I participate in a number of community service projects. I, I volunteer up at the Oregon Media Society. I volunteer at the Tiger Library. I started there actually because it's halfway between where I work, which is out of Nike and home, so it was a good stopover on the way home. Get a kind of...
Beat the traffic.
Beat the traffic a little bit. And then I also was, last fall, I was elected or appointed, I guess, to the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust. That group did not meet this year, but I hope they will meet again next year and get to participate in that. So, that's kind of my background.
And why do you want to serve on this?
I guess, kind of a, maybe two of a generic way to put this is that I want to give back to the community that's given a lot to me. Looking back at, you know, all the opportunities that have come to me, a lot of it can be traced back to involvement in the community. I learned, you know, I started playing soccer here with the community programs, ended up getting into high-level playing, got to play all around the world. I, you know, my education started here, which gave me a good opportunity to get into a good college, which, you know, led to getting a good job after college and, you know, further success. And then also, you know, my family lives here, being someone who's proud of my heritage, you know, honoring that kind of tradition of being a community member and doing my civic duty. So that's kind of the real reasons I want to participate more in different aspects of the community, like the Urban Renewal Commission.
If you don't mind, I'd like a follow-up on this one.
Yes, Mayor Holliday.
So, I, I caught your, your comment about international travel. The Urban Renewal Commission typically meets, typically no more than once a month, but sometimes more than that. Would you see that as a, as a problem for you?
I believe you meet typically first Wednesday of every month. My current schedule typically has me traveling towards the end of each month. Any other conflicts that would arise, of course, I would give notice, but so far, my schedule does not, as far as I can tell, does not foreshadow any conflicts with that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. What is your level of understanding of how urban renewal works? Please explain. And what is the impacts that you have seen as a result of urban renewal within Oregon City?
So as I, as far as I understand, urban renewal is a economic practice where the city and private investment, municipalities, other government agencies, come together, put together funds that will increase the appeal, the infrastructure, the overall just benefit of, of maybe the community, the, the business side, the residential side, that has a greater impact on bringing in more, more citizens, which of course increases revenue, more businesses, which increases tax revenue, making life, all of that better for its citizens. Beyond that, you know, urban renewal is really about making sure that the evolution of a city does not deteriorate. You know, as a city gets older, as a city continues to grow, things do get left behind. And making sure that those things that were originally, you know, a historic part of the city are not left to just kind of dwindle away. In Oregon City, you know, I can remember back to the late 90s when most of downtown Oregon City was not in great condition. And since that time, you know, seeing the, the vitality, you know, come back to the city, I know that there's been a lot of, you know, work between a number of organizations, the Downtown Association, the Urban Renewal Commission, a number of programs implemented to improve the facade, the interiors of these buildings. You know, I, I go down to the barber shop down near Main Street with my father and we, you know, the, the outside of that has changed dramatically over the years. The buildings, the, the, in front of the courthouse, all of that has drastically changed, improving its appearance. And you can see it now, you know, a good example that I can think of off the top of my head is the Cars and Coffees on Saturday mornings. More community, you know, engagement now because the city has, has stepped up and, and taken, you know, and made the city look nicer, feel nicer, be more, you know, kind of that historic Oregon City feel that it was a long time ago.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
How do you think urban renewal is a beneficial, oh, sorry, do you think urban renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I think it's a very good tool, but it's one of many tools that the city has. I think the programs that Oregon City has implemented over the last, you know, decade or so have really dramatically improved the city, improved the, the appeal to new businesses, has improved the appeal to residents who, you know, originally might have gone to city development areas that were much newer, up, I think, up on Sunnyside, Clockman's area. But now they're staying local because they know that Oregon City, you know, has the appeal just as much as any other part of the Portland Metro area. I think that in addition to community, or sorry, urban renewal, there's other things that the city, you know, can, can use as well. One thing that I mentioned, I think, in my application was the idea of a, of a smart city. Urban renewal, when I think of it, it's more not just facade, but building structure. But in addition to that, looking ahead to where is the community going to go? How is the community going to interact? How are individuals going to interact with the community? You know, nowadays, most teenagers, most kids operate their entire community from their cellphone. Looking forward, the, the idea that cities will have to become some way integrated into a network to better its citizens, whether that's smart traffic lights, whether that's better health care through cloud-based programs that, you know, initiate care for citizens that are in the city, maybe outside the city that can't come into a physician's office all the time. You know, urban renewal kind of encapsulates that. And at some points, it kind of is just on the fringes of that, and I think so. As a tool, it is, it can be used really well to increase benefit to society, to citizens, but it also is just one of many tools that the city has at its disposal.
What are the current Urban Renewal Work Plan objectives and priorities?
As far as I can tell, the, the current programs that I, that I know of in Oregon City, the facade program, which is to kind of renovate and allow or offer additional assistance to renovating exteriors of buildings. You also have the interior reuse program and the blue collar program, I believe, which is an interior, sorry, economic program to help increase the blue collar jobs, which again brings in more economic growth for the city.
Okay. And how would these objectives and priorities be aligned with your objectives and priorities as an Urban Renewal Commissioner?
I think, or I know that I would be more for continuing those programs and developing them further. You know, one thing that I would look to do as a commissioner or as a Urban Renewal Commissioner is to really focus on programs that not only bring in blue collar and more jobs, but jobs that are high increase in, in wealth, in income, that are high, you know, sustainability, that don't fluctuate with the economy so that the, the city, the citizens continue to have good jobs even in rough times. This allows both the city to continue to draw in revenue and as well produces more increase, you know, inflow of new citizens to the city. I would also look at developing program or pushing for programs that would increase the, the access, the networking ability of the city. If you implement smart city technology, you can make it work more efficiently, which reduces costs for the city overall, which allows it then to provide more programs for citizens, whether that's on the urban renewal side, in the education, in the health care, in whatever other fields you want. So that's kind of what I would, I would look to do as a member of the Urban Renewal Commission.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
All right. Joshua, how about, what is a significant contribution that you could make to the Urban Renewal Commission's effort in accomplishing the goals and objectives of the Urban Renewal Plan?
I think maybe the one area that is a little bit unique is part of my current job is working with boards and administrations from high-tech industries and making, and helping standardize them to the point that they work effectively and efficiently at producing and achieving their goals. their goals. There are nuances to working with a commission, a board group, on coming to agreement on situations, on issues, on problems, and collectively coming together and working out to make sure that the best solution is achieved, that the goals of the group is always in the forethought and is always achieved or being achieved if it's an ongoing goal. I think that's kind of one nuance that I kind of bring to the table, having great experience with working with boards and all of that. Additionally, I think I would add a lot of just background knowledge on, you know, my finance degree, I spent a lot of time studying economics, from environmental economics to just business economics and all in between. So I have a good sense and a good knowledge base on all of that. I also have a good sense on the community, having grown up here all my life, you know, understanding where the city came from, where it is now, and where, you know, citizens in the future will want it to be, and how they want it to see. You know, being a little bit younger, I have the forethought of what's the city going to look like in 50 years, and kind of that thought in my head, and what is, what will be expected of the city from the citizens.
Thanks.
Thank you. In your opinion, how well informed are Oregon City citizens about the fundamentals of Urban Renewal? And if communication or informational improvements are needed, what ways would you improve community education on Urban Renewal?
Honestly, for the most part, I don't think citizens, I think they see the results. They don't necessarily understand the full concept behind urban renewal plans. I think most citizens, you know, like I was saying, see the changes on Main Street, see the changes on Seventh Street, see how new buildings or old buildings are being renovated. If you haven't driven down near the shopping center recently, you would not even know that they've cleared out the Cove, or they're working on clearing that out, which is a new program or new plan that's going into place. So they see it, whether they truly understand everything that's going on behind it, the partnerships, the collaboration with private investors. I'm not sure that all of them recognize the work that goes into it. How I would push to educate citizens more on that, you know, there's a lot of tech, there's a lot of push now with social media. There's also a lot of, you know, new community groups or community meetings areas that I think could be utilized. The Farmers Market up on the Bluff, I think that is a great area to introduce new programs or share with community members, you know, what's going on, what's happening. I think onsite presentations, you know, when ground was being broken on the new Cove area, I'm not sure. There might have been, but I believe, you know, having some type of press there to, you know, say, this is the start.
What press?
Exactly. But, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of new ways or new areas to meet up with consumers, or, sorry, citizens, that I would try and utilize face-to-face, I think, working the best. At the same time, though, you can also do online educational programs, more resources online that could help increase the knowledge or the understanding of what Urban Renewal is, what it does. You know, I know that the one, the project where the Blue Hair, the Paper Mill is now, they've done a lot of, you know, work on just creating the information that's going into that site, you know, what it's about, what it's going to do. When that video came up where they showed the whole plan and action, that actually blew up on Facebook, I don't know, among my friends and family. It was a very popular video for a long time, and people shared it, and even family members and friends that had moved away, shared it with everyone. So those kind of things, I think, draw in people to want to understand programs more, insight, interest, and encourage them to study up on what's happening in their community.
Thank you. So if chosen, how would you interpret your role and what would be your expectation throughout your term of service as an Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission member?
I think I would see my role as being someone, you know, initially off, learning, understanding, you know, how the dynamics of it all works. But over the long term, I would look to increase my presence by giving feedback from a perspective of someone who is not just looking, again, looking at the city from what's it going to look like in 10 years, but what's it going to look like, what would it look like in 50 years? What is the expectation, you know, and as projects come up, as proposals are reviewed, you know, looking at them longer term to the point, you know, is there anything you can do now that will be used or utilized later on down the road? So I think that would be kind of my main focus, is looking at that long-term, maybe not even objectives, long-term dreams, and how objectives now can play into those long-term ambitions, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any additional comments, or is there anything that you would like to ask us?
No, I think I'm pretty good.
All right, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Hey, Joshua.
Thank you.
So is the next one here?
Yes.
We're going to be on time again, gosh. No, let's do it, get it over with, and go have dinner. Welcome, Mr. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Shaw.
All right, Peter and Matthew. Thanks for applying to the Urban Renewal Commission here this evening. So first question's going to be, please provide us with a brief introduction of yourself, your background and experience, and why you want to serve on the city's Urban Renewal Commission.
Sure, absolutely. I appreciate...
There we go.
All right, appreciate being invited today, and thank you to the council and the mayor for having me. My name is Matthew Cool. I recently relocated to Oregon City, just bought a house up the street, actually, a couple of months ago. Previously, I was living back east and done grad school for a master's in public policy. So volunteering and serving my community has been very important to me throughout my life. Previously, I was in the Peace Corps, serving in Africa. And my interest in the committee specifically is wanting to be, play a greater role in the city I live in and, you know, developing its future as a place where I'm living and want my family to live.
But as far as this Urban Renewal, what do you think that's what you're applying for, you're...
Correct. Correct. So Urban Renewal specifically, I think Oregon City has, is a large asset in the metro area, as far as its location, the city itself, and the renewing the blighted areas of the community, and creating a more positive future for the residents of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Through Urban Renewal.
All right.
Please explain your level of understanding of how Urban Renewal works, and what impacts on the community have you observed as a result of Urban Renewal?
So I've studied some Urban Renewal in my graduate program. That was one year in Pittsburgh, which has a huge Urban Renewal problem. My focus was more policy in general and not Urban Renewal specifically there, but through my coursework, we were exposed to some Urban Renewal issues. So I dealt with just some of those issues through my coursework.
Do you think Urban Renewal is a beneficial economic development tool? Why or why not?
I absolutely do. I think it can be used to create and support businesses and jobs within the community and create a better place for citizens to live and to enjoy.
What are the current Urban Renewal Work Plan objectives and priorities?
Of the city of Oregon? I am not 100% familiar with them, but I know just living in the community, the waterfront, the old mill site, and also further development up like the Seventh Street, Malala Corridor, I believe.
Mr. Shaw.
All right, Joshua, what is a significant contribution that you could make to the Urban Renewal Commission's effort in accomplishing the goals and objectives of the Urban Renewal Plan?
I come from a diverse background and a diverse experiences, newly relocated to the city, as I previously mentioned, and I think coming with that type of perspective can be useful to the committee in looking at different Urban Renewal projects and grants.
Thank you.
In your opinion, how well informed are Oregon City citizens about the fundamentals of Urban Renewal? And if communication or informational improvements are needed, what ways would you improve community education on Urban Renewal?
Excellent. I've been on the city's website, looked at the Urban Renewal website and some of the Urban Renewal plans there. So I think information is available to the public. To the extent that the public is aware of efforts that are currently underway, I'm not positive, I'm not too sure of how much they're aware of that. To increase that further, I think like further community outreach and engagement is always a critical component of that.
If chosen, how would you interpret your role and what would be your expectation throughout your term of service as an Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission member?
Oh, the role of a member-at-large would be to work with the city council and the other member-at-large to review grant proposals and different Urban Renewal projects that the committee faces and provide the citizen-at-large's opinion of those to the city council for their, and to the Urban Renewal Council for their decision.
Do you have any additional comments, or is there anything you'd like to ask the commission?
Not at this time. No, I think...
Okay, well, thanks for taking the time to apply, and we have two more interviews I think to do next week or a week after, and then we'll be letting folks know. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, Joshua.
Okay, so unless I'm wrong, that concludes this special session of the Oregon City Commission. We will come back in...